Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of September 20th, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everyone. It's so nice to see a full house. Do we have any students here who are here from B.C., CSUB, or other places? Pedro, did you come back? We do have some. So, welcome back, Pedro. I was here for the closed session, and he's back again. So, welcome to all of you, and thank you so much for engaging in the civic process. We appreciate that. At this time, Pastor Tom Touchstone, who's the executive pastor from Valley Bible Fellowship, is going to offer the invocation. And Pastor, we just thank you so much for all that your church is doing. I know this Saturday, I'm scheduled to be with your church for serving on September Day, which is our Change Our City project, right? And I think I had heard that during that time, you're going to have up to 1,200 volunteers, people possibly visiting convalescent homes, handing flowers out to the elderly, visiting laundromats, and handing out free money for the laundromats. Do you want to just really quickly, before we start the invocation? Well, let me just finish that. Just tell me whether I'm right. Starbucks cards, free soccer clinics, going to the hospital. Thank you so much for all that your church is doing to reach out to our community. Did I kind of capsulize that correctly?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you really did. Yeah, we just try to go out and we love Bakersfield the way Jesus would if he was here.
Very good.
Yeah, we have put between, I think last serving in September, and Councilmember Parlier was there. I think we had 1,500 people going to the community and just serve. We all wear the same T-shirts, and so kind of just go out there and just do whatever we can. So, anything else you guys think we can do, please let me know.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And following Pastor's invocation, we will have Brendan Guerra from Bakersfield High School, a good driller. He's a senior there and is the Chief Master Sergeant of the Air Force Junior ROTC, and he will lead us then in the pledge after Pastor prays. So, would you all please stand now?
Let's pray. Lord, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity today just to be here. Lord, my day started with firefighters, Lord, and then it's going to be ending with a service tonight. And right now, I'm just asking, Lord, as this meeting goes on, that you would be the invited guest. We ask God that you would move in this group's heart, Lord, just a lot of honorable city council members, Madam Go, and just the honorable mayor. I pray, God, that tonight, as they're just taking issues for this fine city in front of you, Lord, that you would speak into their hearts, that you would let everybody just put aside any thoughts and ideas and listen to what you're saying. And I pray, God, that the decisions made would be the concerns of this fine city. Lord, help us, God, all come together and make Bakersfield the best city in America, Lord. I pray, God, that this would be something that'd be brought about through your grace and your mercy. I ask God that you would bless everybody here. We ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Guerra?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much, Mr. Guerra. We appreciate your service with Junior ROTC. And thank you, Pastor. Here are some guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones at this time. In keeping with council policy, council members are not allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in your use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed during the other times of the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, signs aren't allowed in the council chambers. And we thank you so much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation to Jennifer Henry, Executive Director of Links for Life, declaring October 2017 Paint the Town Pink Month in Bakersfield.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see all of you. Hello. Good to see you. Want you to introduce them when I'm finished?
I don't like these statistics. One in eight U.S. women, it's about 12%, will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. In 2017, it's estimated that over 250,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be found, and over 63,000 of non-invasive. We want to change that, and I'm so thankful for your group, for Links for Life, and all of the wonderful things that you are doing to make a difference in the area of breast cancer. And it is my honor to be able to proclaim the following. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed October 2017 as Paint the Town Pink Month in our city in recognition of the residents of our community currently struggling with breast cancer, in recognition of those who have engaged in the battle and have been victorious, as well as those not as fortunate, in recognition of the unwavering support of family and friends, offering sanctuary and encouragement to loved ones in the midst of treatment, in recognition of Links for Life and other groups committed to increasing awareness and ultimately finding a cure for breast cancer, in recognition of the importance of raising public consciousness regarding breast cancer symptoms, and the importance of regular self-examinations, in recognition of the significance of yearly mammograms, in recognition of the importance of securing funding for research, in recognition of the millions of Americans touched by breast cancer, whether those afflicted or those that love them, and in recognition of the effort to unite the Bakersfield community in the effort to eradicate this disease by displaying the color pink during the month of October. It's signed Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, and it's my honor to be able to present this to you. Thank you so much. Let's take a picture, and then you can come back. How about that? Picture first. Take a picture here. Right here with the team.
Professional. Wait, let's get the...
The petite, petite ones in front.
Yes, you go first. You're petite. That's good.
Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you. And now you may have the rest of the floor. Introduce your friends here, the whole team, and tell us about the color pink.
Okay, I have Susan, our wig fitter in our office. I have Marlene, one of our awesome volunteers and survivor. Stana Bright, one of our founders 25 years ago, and volunteer extraordinaire. And Charlotte Brandt, our president of the board, breast cancer survivor, and an all-around great, wonderful Kern County advocate. So, breast cancer is the second most common cancer cause of cancer deaths in Kern County females, only to lung cancer. Statewide, it's number three. Over the past five years, 432 Kern County residents have died due to breast cancer. Kern County is ranked 48th out of 58 counties for female breast cancer mortality. Kern rate's 17% higher than the state average. Every year, around 400 women are diagnosed with breast cancer. Links for Life is celebrating our 25th year in Kern County. Thanks to your support, I think we've been here every year, so thank you for having us back. This is why we educate our community. Last year, we funded over 300 mammograms and ultrasounds for women under the age of 40, also men. We have diagnosed men with breast cancer. You ask why under 40, the state of California funds women over 40, and men. We funded 13 needle biopsies, diagnosed one woman under the age of 40 with breast cancer. Once diagnosed, able to receive treatment through the Breast Cancer Treatment Fund. If we weren't diagnosing, who would? We fitted, actually Susan fitted, 331 women diagnosed with cancer, any form of cancer, who lost their hair. She helps us in our office and our CBCC location. 374 women attended our support group. Not all at once, it's monthly. So, we also have started an under-40 support group for those women battling cancer, breast cancer, under 40. We educated nearly 21,000 community members in regards to breast health. We need your help to educate, so there's a little gift with the Clerk of the Board, but also my business card, so you can call if you need us to come out and educate your constituents, because it's going to take a lot of us to change our numbers, to get women early so they don't die of this cancer. Because if you're diagnosed early, there's a 98% survival rate, so why wouldn't we get them in early? So, we thank you for supporting Links for Life and October Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Our walk is the 3rd of October, our fashion show is the 19th, and a plethora of other events throughout October. So, thank you for your support and all you do for us in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Ms. Henry and team. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Recognition by the Employee Incentive Team to the recipients of the 2017 Excellence in Action Award, Extra Mile Award, and the Shining Team Achievement Recognition Award for their outstanding services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go and council members of the city council. My name is Shayla Collins. I'm a human resource analyst with the city, as well as the administrator of the city's employee incentive team. Today, I am pleased to present the city's 2017 Excellence in Action program. Before introducing the winners, I'd like to recognize the efforts and contributions of the employee incentive team. The team is essentially a volunteer group. Their time and participation in this process is greatly appreciated and deserving of individual recognition. Numerous nominations were submitted, which represent employees who have excelled in their jobs and provided notable service to the organization and the community throughout the year. The winners represent the multiple departments and diverse job categories. As each winner is introduced, Mr. Tandy will present the award to each employee, and in the interest of time and the ability for each recipient to hear their name, I would ask the audience to please hold their applause until all the awards have been presented. Jeanette Beck is also going to assist me. She's a member of our employee incentive team. So, the first award is from the Executive Department, Sandra Duncan. Sandra is a human resources clerk and has been employed with the city for two years.
Congratulations.
Finance Department, Sarah Hunley. Sarah is an accounting supervisor and has been employed with the city for 12 years. Fire Department, Scott Standridge. Scott is a fire battalion chief and has been employed with the city for 26 years.
Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Police Department, Kelsey Taylor. Kelsey is a community relations specialist and has been employed with the city for five Public Works Department, Connie Huddleston. Connie is an accounting clerk, too, in the Fleet Services Division, and has been employed with the city for 27 years. Public Works Department, Robert Manuel. Robert is a supervisor, too, in the Solid Waste Division, and has been employed with the city for seven years. Public Works Department, Inez Tolentino. Inez is a construction inspector in the Construction Engineering Division and has been employed with the city for four years. Public Works Department, Sergio Zambrano. Sergio is a traffic painter, too, in the Journal Service Division, and employed with the city 17 years. Recreation and Parks Department, Laura Rosales. Laura is a service maintenance worker and has been employed with the city for 14 years. Water Department, Kimberly Alamon. Kimberly is an accounting clerk, too, and has been employed with the city 14 years. Water Department, Joe Navarro. Joe is a business manager and has been employed with the city for nine years. Congratulations. Then we also have three recipients unable to attend the meeting tonight. From Technology Services was Buffy Kaiser, Fire Engineer Matt Smith, and Assistant Public Works, Assistant to the Public Works Director, excuse me, Georgina Lorenzi. Okay, next, we have the Star Award, Shining Team Achievement Recognition, commends and reinforces the need for all employees to collaborate and work in support of one another for overall success of the city. This year's winners are a team from the Public Works Department Waste Water Division. And here with us today, we have Andrew O'Brien, Yvette Roldan, and David Weatherly.
Want to come up in order? I'll give you the wrong thing. Congratulations.
So, also included in their group but not present are Tony Bernard Jr. and Jaime Mendoza.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Finally, the teams selected this year by the city manager and the executive staff for the Extra Mile Award are members of the Bakersfield Fire Department Swift Water Rescue Team. This team has shown the value of their training and preparation by conducting over 30 swift water rescues and an untold number of rescue assists with other agencies on the Kern River as of late July. So, this team includes...
I have a word on this.
Sure.
Sorry. First, I want to thank the Employee Incentive Committee for going through this. They work very hard, and it's difficult. This next award's the only one that the manager's office approves or gives. The rest is peer recognition within the organization. We had five years drought. The Swift Water Rescue Team had problems practicing in the sand. And this year, we had the sixth wettest year in the city's history. We had all kinds of problems, people getting stranded, some used poor judgment, some just were deceived by the appearance of things. And the next group saved a lot of lives in unusual circumstances, putting themselves at risk. They do that on fires all the time, but this was kind of a hybrid and out-of-the-box of their normal behavior. That's why they're getting this special recognition tonight, and thanks to Chief Greener and his support staff for initiating the program some years ago and getting it to the point where it was this year.
And here with us from the team today, we have Cody Adams, William Ballard, Chris Usee, and David Sipe.
Congratulations.
Stay up there so we can do a group one when you're finished. Just stay up.
And not here tonight, but recognizes Paul Hitchcock and Randall Woodard.
Congratulations.
Okay, come back, gentlemen, for a group picture. You did this as a team, so it seems like it'd be appropriate to get a group shot.
One, two, three.
So, definitely, we would like to commend the winners for a job well done, and thank you for your time and joining us in recognizing our recipients this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. You know, we have over 1,500 employees in the city. You don't get this award by being good or great. You get this award by being exceptional. So, thank you again for all of your service, all of you out there. Mr. Tandy, thank you, and peer recognition, how wonderful. So, to all of you, we really thank you, and let's give them another round of applause. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written statements that are longer than your verbal statements, we would ask you to give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Oh, I see, we have a lot of people who, your families came, so thank you, families, for coming. We'll just give you a minute to go ahead and depart. I hope some of you stay. You don't have to. Well, family members, I don't think your family members could have done it without you being part of the family and supporting them. So, thank you also, and we applaud you, too, for your support and being part of the city family. So, if you are leaving the auditorium, we just ask that you would exit quickly now so that we can continue with our meeting, and go ahead and celebrate outside and be joyous outside the doors. But thank you again, and congratulations. All right, so back to our public statement guidelines. We would ask that you avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're certainly interested and concerned with your issues, and due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker? Tell us who we have on the agenda tonight, and then call the first public speaker.
We have received seven speaker cards. All speakers will be discussing Item 13A, the first reading of an ordinance relating to commercial cannabis activity. The first speaker this evening is Gabriel Godinez.
So, just, so we all remember again, 15 minutes per topic. So, we have 15 minutes for all seven of you to speak. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Madam Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Gabriel Godinez. I'm a local attorney here in town. I want to address some of the issues that I think should be taken into consideration before having a vote. I would ask that the council hold off the vote on the ban on the adult use of cannabis. There are certain things that are being done within the county which would lend a lot of information and give some guidance as to the city council, what they can, what they may want to do, and information on making a decision on how best to proceed forward. Let's not forget, in November 2018, it's going to be on the ballot for the people to vote on collectives and the use of cannabis. That's coming up. I would encourage the city council to take the bull by the horns. Use and review the Environmental Impact Report. It's very comprehensive. Laura Lioviat did an excellent job, very comprehensive environmental impact report regarding cannabis, all facets of the cannabis industry in the state and how it's going to affect the county. A lot of the information is very relevant to the city as well. One of the questions I have for staff is what is the cost for the city to enforce the ban? County estimates between $2 and $3 million. I'm talking code enforcement, sheriff, attorney, whether the attorney's in-house or whether the information is outsourced. There is information there. I think the public needs to know, has a right to know, where is that money going to come from? Is it from the general fund? Are you getting anything from the states? My understanding, those cities and counties that enforce the ban will not be receiving any funds from the state regarding the cannabis industry here in the state of California. So, I would again ask and respectfully request that staff, and I would be more than happy to assist, to get more information to the council members so that the vote is being made and decisions being made with all of the information available. There is information out there, and I encourage everyone to look at it. Let's peel it back, and I would encourage the council to adopt an ordinance of its own instead of the city having to take an ordinance that's being voted on. It's an opportunity here for the city to do the right thing for everyone across the board. I understand we can't make everyone happy, but if the city council wants to have and to make a determination on the future of this particular industry, it would behoove the council not to try to get an ordinance that works, and it works for the council and works for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Godinez. Madam Clerk, next item. Next speaker, please.
Victoria Golden.
Ms. Golden, are you present? Do not see her, so let's move on to the next one, please.
TJ Esposito.
Please introduce yourself.
Hello, Mayor Go and city council members and staff. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Mayor Go for stepping up to the plate and being there for the people and answering your phone. I appreciate you being there for us. A couple of things that I'd like to talk about in my three minutes would be some of the pros and cons. I've been heavily involved as a medical marijuana advocate and somebody who believes in people's rights to choose to use marijuana in a legal fashion. I would like to talk to you about some of those dynamics of our current situation. Currently, you guys have had a ban for, I'm guessing, a couple of years now, an all-out ban on marijuana shops, and we have had an explosion of illegal dispensaries. I'm talking not like spice and things we've experienced in the past, but I'm talking an explosion. Over 100 storefront dispensaries are operating and not paying taxes to run a business in the city, and we pay lots of taxes. So, number one, that's very unfair that they're operating and not paying taxes. Number two, they're totally unregulated. So, much like bars and cigarette stores, we have secret shoppers, and we go and see if they're checking for ID and recommendations. One of the major problems in these illegal dispensaries is they're letting people in and not requiring a recommendation. So, unregulating the ban has caused an environment of illegal activity and letting kids and unlicensed people into these places to access the marijuana. The patients, from a public safety standpoint, the patients, the patients that choose to use marijuana in a legal fashion, that get marijuana from these places, or getting marijuana that has been untested. So, literally, these people, tax-paying, good citizens, are consuming these things, and they're unsafe and unregulated, untested. That's not responsible. It's your guys' job to protect the citizens, whether they choose that or not, but to make sure that they're doing this in a safe manner. So, Mr. Godinez had mentioned that Laura Lioviat has done a great job. She's done her due diligence. I would highly encourage you to ask her questions, set up some meetings, and be more educated before taking an all-out ban that is similar to the one that currently hasn't worked at all. I have a couple of more things. If you guys choose to do an all-out ban and increase our current problem that we have, it would cost the county roughly $2 million, which could raise taxes. So, I know we just had a water hike. Hopefully, you don't raise my taxes any more than you already have. I'd like to make sure that, you know, if we give and take a little, you're going to raise my water. Don't raise my taxes on something that's not going to work. Anyway, I know I'm over time. I had more, but I will submit that in a written manner, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tris.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
Michael Turnipseed.
Please introduce yourself.
Madam Chairman, I'm this mayor, members of the council, Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Not to be repetitive and waste your time, two basic things. Two basic things. Bans don't work. They didn't work in prohibition. They're not working now with marijuana. We need to regulate these businesses out of business. It's being done in other places. And new, I call them professionals, are stepping in and opening facilities that follow all the regulations and conduct business the way they're supposed to be conducted. And I'd recommend that you do. If you don't want to read the county studies, you do your own studies on both environmental and economic so you have the facts so you can determine what the unintended consequences of either any action you take. And that would be important thing because you'd hate to look back and see that you really missed a good opportunity. And the only time you know that is if you study the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please.
Heather Epps.
Hello. All right, so there are a few things the council--
Ms. Epps, please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Heather Epps. I'm with Kern Citizens for Patient Rights. We ran the cannabis initiative this last summer. There are a few things the council has to accept about cannabis. What we're doing now isn't working. What we've done in the past hasn't worked. Prohibition since 1913, the last 144 years, hasn't worked. After a century of prohibition in California, your constituents have made the decision to legalize because people are not going to stop consuming cannabis. People will not stop growing. They will not stop buying. They will not stop selling. It's never going to happen. So, what does this ban do? What will happen if you vote yes on this ban? Since we have to accept people don't care about prohibition laws, especially now that it's legal for anyone over the age of 21 to consume cannabis in the state of California, we have to ask ourselves, what happened in the past? How did we get here, and what have we learned? Where did people grow and process cannabis in the last century? In homes, in backyards, in our neighborhoods with no regulation, and that's a huge safety issue. Where did people grow and process cannabis in the last century? In our homes, in our backyards. I'm sorry, I think I read that already. But where did people buy cannabis? In homes, in parks, in fast food parking lots, at fast trip. It's happened, and it's happening now. A yes vote will only push cannabis sales into our neighborhoods. Where else do you think they're going? You will be 100% responsible for sales in our neighborhoods, and this council will be 100% responsible for creating a black market that funds drug cartels and organized crime. That is what Kern Citizens for Patient Rights has been working to eliminate the last six years, and we will continue the next decade if we have to. If this council doesn't take a proactive approach to proper zoning, the only approach that will make a positive impact by improving safety and providing new tax revenue, January of 2018 is going to create havoc like this council has never seen. Eliminating industry and shuttering businesses, leaving people out of work. When you take away somebody's rights, they react. They will fill your chambers, your email accounts, your voicemails, call any of the board of supervisors, ask them what happened in 2011 when they tried to ban the shops. This last election year has been crazy. We all know that. We really wanted to kind of bide our time until 2018, come to some open agreement with the council, local law enforcement, and our local government. But it's going to take courage on your part. And you've heard a lot about, oh, the benefits of cannabis and the tax revenue and the safety. But I want to close with morality. The very first book of the Bible, Genesis, the first and second page of the Bible, Genesis 1:11 through 13. Then God said, "Let the earth cause grass to sprout, seed-bearing plants and fruit trees according to their kind, yielding fruit along with seed of the earth." And it was so, and the earth began to produce grass, seed-bearing plants, and trees yielding fruit along with seed according to their kind. Then God said, "It was good." And there was an evening, and there was a morning, a third day. And if we go down to Genesis 1:29 through 31, after God created Adam Eve, he said, "Here I have given you, given to you every seed-bearing plant that is on the entire earth, and every tree with seed-bearing fruit. Let them serve as food for you. And let every wild animal of the earth and to every flying creature of the heavens--
Ms. Epps, you are over time.
I'm almost done. "Of the heavens, to everything moving on the earth in which there is life, I have given all green vegetation for food, and it was so. And God saw everything he had made, and looked; it was very good. And there was an evening, and there was a morning, a sixth day." Cannabis is a plant God created. Man says it's bad, not God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. Next speaker, please.
Allison Bohannon.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Allison Bohannon. I'm here to talk to you about informed decisions, marijuana in our city. The effect this council could have, will have, on the city and a large percentage of its citizens is far too great to not entirely educate oneself, as well as the public, of the possible effects that an ordinance regarding the passage of Prop 64 will have on our city. Positive and negative outcomes must be considered. It's the only way that an informed decision can be made. At a minimum, the city is obligated to conduct an initial environmental review, the review of this project and its environmental effects. Furthermore, the city failed to conduct an EIR, an environmental review, in the original adoption of Resolution 25204. Years have passed, and the effects of the environment are public knowledge. Let us not make another misinformed decision resulting in unfair prejudice against our citizens. There's six basic arguments. I won't go through them all, but I'll highlight some. Bakersfield's homeless population and mental health needs. Bakersfield, the Kern County Homeless Collaborative reports that 1,067 people were found homeless during the annual census of 2016. These people are sleeping outside and in emergency shelters or transitional housing, according to Kern County Homeless Collaborative. Most of them are in Bakersfield. The very heart of our city has the highest population of homeless individuals. Unsheltered individuals within the city has increased by 51% in 2016. That's huge. If the city chooses to ban all marijuana sale and distribution within the city limits, the homeless population in our metropolitan area do not have vehicles nor funding for public transportation. This would make it a hardship for them to receive any medication. Homelessness is the condition of people without a permanent dwelling, such as a house or an apartment. Prop 64 allows for the growth of medication for personal use, although 0% of our homeless have a home to do that in. Delivery services will stay, although you have to have a home address to have them delivered to. Once again, our homeless have no way to receive medication. We know about the tax revenue, and the essence of benefit to all. Cultivation. Under Prop 64, we're allowed to grow six cannabis plants for personal use at home. If there's no dispensaries within the city limits, people will turn to growing their own medication, of course. This increases crime. Closing dispensaries may actually causes an increase in crime. This is a carbon footprint we'll be leaving for our next generation. A recent study conducted by the University of Southern California and the University of Irvine, published in the Journal of Urban Economics, says it does, closing dispensaries may actually increase crime. They found that in areas dispensaries were closing, crime increased by 12%. The findings are similar to those in previous study in Denver, conducted by the Marijuana Policy Project, which found 8% decrease in crime after a dispensary was introduced to the neighborhood. No matter how you look at it, our environment will change with the passing or banning of this ordinance. The other key--
Ms. Bohannon, we have just a few seconds left. Can you just bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay.
We have one more speaker.
Sure. Last key is, in the city's own words, in their own language, they admitted that the environmental impact is significant. On Resolution 25204, page 1, 2, and 3, states, "There is no, there are no permanent uses, permitted uses in a zone similar to type to medical dispensaries, even if such similar uses existed due to the negative secondary effects of medical marijuana dispensaries. Such businesses are more obnoxious and detrimental to the welfare of the community than any permitted uses."
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
And thank you for sharing, Ms. Bohannon. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. We have about a minute left on this topic.
Martin Smith.
Mayor.
Whoops, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Rivera.
So, I happen to know that some of the folks that have spoken today actually came from out of town. I'm wondering if maybe we could extend and allow the last speaker three minutes since we're making a decision on this item later this evening?
Sure, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman. My name is Martin Smith. I am from Los Angeles. We are an industrial, commercial, real estate group called Industrial Partners. And I'm here just to speak, not as an advocate for cannabis by any means, just as a businessperson, and I think what's in the interest of the community. Clearly, there are many, many communities moving forward with cannabis regulations. And we, as, you know, one sector of the industry, go where we're wanted. We're not here to beat your doors down, not here to read scripture to you and try to convince you that cannabis is made by, you know, good forces. It's cannabis. You may not like it, but you're not going to be able to exterminate it. You know, the ban, certainly, I agree, is going to do nothing more than to extend the issues you've had with law enforcement, with bad actors. The way the bad actors will be best dealt with is by giving a legal avenue and bringing in the professional operators, the people that we generally work with. And as we come in, others will come in as well. A perfect example is we worked with the city of Santa Ana, who had passed an ordinance but still had dispensaries that were rogue operators. You know, we, with the professional operators, followed civil actions as a private enforcement mechanism, California Business Profession Code 17200, and helped shut them down. So, first off, I agree with the other speakers. The best way to get rid of your problems, and the only way to get rid of your problems is to give a legal avenue, and that would be some form of regulation. I would also suggest that we do all types of industrial and commercial real estate, that this is not solely about dispensaries. That's certainly the public interface that you see. It's where all your problems have stemmed from. But there is a large, large, in fact, the greatest segment of this industry is not the dispensaries. It's the manufacturers, the cultivation, the processing, the distribution. There's a huge tax base there. The county knows that they're sitting on potentially tens of millions of dollars a year, you know. And I think the city is missing out on potentially millions of dollars. And that, again, is an industry that will bring in, you know, living wage jobs, as well as tax revenue, and has almost no externalities on the community. These are very safe, secure facilities for either cultivation or manufacture, and wouldn't lead to the problems you have. And, yeah, I would just invite that we are here, you know, to provide information. We have worked with many communities throughout California. But we will not be here. I mean, what your ban will do is it will drive good actors like ourselves and, of course, potential tax dollars and development monies to the communities that want us. And time is of the essence. There are, you know, communities vying for this industry elsewhere in California. And if your door is shut, we will go elsewhere. And that's by no means a threat. It's just the financial reality. I would beseech you that you had all these good city employees here. I'm sure they would all like to have raises, and you would love to have more money in your general fund. You should think about this on economic terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have the Open Budget Demonstration.
Thank you. Mr. Tandy, any comments before Mr. Hewitt? Mr. Hewitt.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Chris Hewitt, City Manager's Office. Tonight, I'm going to be quickly providing you with an overview of our new Open Budget Transparency software that we launched, oh, three or four weeks ago now. This platform complements the information that we provide through a variety of different means on the city's budget. It complements the city's award-winning budget document as well. What it does is it takes what can normally be kind of a static piece of information and transforms it into a more dynamic approach to reviewing the budget. So, with that, I wanted to, again, just quickly go over the program and answer any questions. I first meant to say that we actually created a little charm, as we call it here on the city's webpage. So, when you hit the homepage, the user will see this, and it's right there and readily available. That takes you to this page, which is the basis for the Open Budget Platform. Essentially, what it allows the user to do is dive into the budget three different ways: revenues, expenditures, and then a special section here for the capital projects. And I'll quickly go through all three to show you kind of how they work. And then I would encourage you, if you have a moment, to get in there and explore. Start on the revenue side. What it does is it essentially gives the user a list of all the different funds that the city collects revenue in. There are 74 funds down here that it's showing. It's showing 15. You can scroll through each of them. You can break it down in a pie chart. You can look at it over time. We have five years of budget history in the system right now, so it shows it over time. This is a total. You can then plot, in this case, the general fund, revenue collection fund onward. Essentially, it gives the user the ability to break it down and look at it in a lot of different ways. Down here, it includes all the numbers that you would traditionally see. And there's three sets of numbers. One is the adopted budget amount for each of these revenue funds, the actual amount that's been collected year-to-date, and that's updated monthly. And then the amended amount. And so, the amended amount includes any sort of additional revenue that's been appropriated by the council throughout the given year for any of these funds. When you click on a fund, it really kind of gets down to the granular numbers. When you click on the general fund, for instance, it breaks it down here by a variety of different sources. That includes taxes, and the beginning fund balance, charges for service, et cetera. So, anything that you see kind of in the budget book and some of our budget presentations is represented here. Again, if you, the more you click, the more information you get. And again, you can kind of change how you want to view it. You can change it from a dollar to a percentage, however you want to view it. Again, as you go into the taxes side, we have three general categories: property tax, sales and use tax, and gross receipt taxes. You can drill down further, and you can get to the different types of property taxes that the city collects. Everything from our secured tax to unsecured to our property transfer tax. So, when a piece of real estate is transferred through a sale, there's a tax that applies there. So, again, it breaks it all down, has the numbers here. It shows you how much has been collected to date for the year. Some of these numbers may look a little off. It's just because of timing in a lot of cases. So, for property tax, for instance, the city receives those twice a year. It corresponds when you pay your property tax bill. So, again, this is the type of information that's available for every fund in which the city collects revenue. Like I said, anything from the general fund, refuse, sewer, down to the more obscure funds that relate to maybe state or federal funding that we receive. It's all there. And again, it's all updated on a monthly basis. On the expenditure side, again, this is looking at how the revenues that we just looked at are then utilized for city operations. And we've broken it down initially by department. So, anything from Public Works down to the City Council. You can use this little button down here to break it down in other different ways. You can break it down by fund, on the expenditure side, expense type. You can look at, again, salary and benefits, capital, purchased property service. And you can drill down to any one of these and look at, let's see. Sorry, Nick, we'll drill down to Public Works. And when we drill down, what we wanted to do, and this is the same on the revenue side, for each of the funds and then each, in this case, of the departments, we provide the user with a snippet of information that describes what they're looking at. So, in this case, they're looking at the Public Works Department and broken down by division. So, again, you can jump into solid waste. You can jump into residential. You can get all the way down to, and again, on the refuse side, let's see, internal vehicles, internal computer equipment. I mean, you can really kind of get down to the granular level is really my point here with this. really my point here with this. So we jump back up to the expenditures, let's go up here real quick. It also includes a search function, so if you start typing, again, we use Public Works as the example, you can get right to, again, that department just by searching. And that really is available on a multiple different levels. So if you're looking for overtime, or salaries, or whatever the case may be, that search function is very helpful. And again, same as the revenue side, all broken down by the various ways over here, pie chart, looking at it over time, you can plot different divisions, that sort of thing. So let's jump out one more time here, and I'll take you through the capital budget quickly. So the capital budget, again, this is looking at projects, projects that, whether it be a park, or a street project, they are all in here, and you can really drill down, this is the way, this, all this data is pulling from our accounting system, which is one benefit with going with the Open Budget Platform that we did, is essentially, again, it's updated monthly, it's updated automatically as data is put into the system, there's no manual exporting or importing of data. So in this case, if we wanted to click on public facilities, it's going to bring up each of the current, each of the capital projects that currently has money appropriated. So in this case, if we wanted to look at, say, the PD Firing Range project that the council approved, there's a little project description, and you will notice some of these drop off, and unfortunately, that's something that we're going to be working on, it's a limitation of the software, but we're going to be working on that. But it provides a little bit of a description of the project, shows in the year that funding was made available, and where that funding is coming from. So in this case, it's the Capital Outlay Fund in 2018, and you can see that it looked like there was money that was appropriated in a prior year for this project as well. So again, this then breaks it down, down here, by the funding source. So let me show you real quickly a project that has multiple funding sources. And again, what this is showing, for each of these years, you can see it plots the amount here on a chart, and then below, again, it's going to break it down, both kind of a representation of a bar here with the funding amounts, depending on how much of each funding source is allocated towards this project. So in this case, for the Sports Village in this particular phase, 96% of the funding comes from park improvement funds, and there's a portion that comes from a regional park fee that is in place out the West Wing Development. So again, this is a great way, when you have a project that is funded over multiple years with multiple funding sources, you can jump in and take a look at how that's funded. Something that I probably didn't mention, and I'll just show it to you real quick, again, on the expenditure side, is a little dark blue line, that represents actual year-to-date. So again, on the expenditure side, it's showing that as well. So again, just wanted to give you a quick overview, we're happy to have it up, we're happy that we are able to launch it, and again, this will be updated monthly, and then going forward, every year now, we'll have that historical information available once the fiscal year is completed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for all your efforts. Councilmember Smith, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I'm just really happy to see this. It's been quite a few years ago that we talked about putting it online so the community could look at it, and I've bounced around this some, and it's really easy to look at, and like you said, easy to get into the weeds and see where money's going and money's coming from. So I really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8Z for Approval. A staff memorandum has been received, or staff memorandums have been received regarding Items 8A and 8E, Transmitting Corrected Documents.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove any consent calendar items for separate consideration? Yes, sir. Miss Councilmember Rivera.
Item I, please.
With that, then, I would move to, I would move to approve Consent Calendar Items A through Z, with the exception of Item I.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the last council meeting we had, specific to this item, I made some comments regarding the reappropriation of these federal-local match dollars we have for a few projects that included a citywide tree replacement, a Rabo Bank Arena radio upgrade, sound wall landscaping improvements on Hosking Avenue, as well as bridge improvements at the Hosking Interchange. You know, at that meeting, I had suggested that perhaps there were alternative uses for those dollars that might be more prudent and more appropriate, and I still believe that. You know, I, for one, in my district, or Ward 1 alone, could use $560,000 we would otherwise be using for citywide tree replacements, for actual road improvements. And, you know, I'd also probably have to question how many of those trees actually will end up in Ward 1 as well, and I don't know the answer to that question, and I imagine that's probably hard to predict. But, you know, I think after five years of very, very dry years, and our very first wet year, I think the most illogical thing we could do is to go right back out there and plant a bunch more trees. So I can't, I can't support that reappropriation there. So I'm, I'd like to ask if my colleagues would consider this in two separate actions, if possible. I don't, unless the city attorney sees a problem that, there's a resolution here with our submittal to the state, there's an appropriation of $2.1 million from SB 1, there's an appropriation of $433,000 and some change, and a loan repayment, and then there's the transfer of dollars associated with my comments just now. I'd like to be able to do a vote separately on Item 4, if I could. And I'm not sure if that's a motion, or...
Madam Attorney?
Mayor, Councilmember Rivera, it would be appropriate, sir, for you to go ahead and move approval then for Item 8I, 1, 2, and 3, and then allow your colleagues to make the motion for Item 4.
Okay. So then I would move approval of Items I, 1, 2, and 3.
You have a motion, please cast your vote.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I'm wondering on this issue, is there an urgency that it be decided tonight, or can we get some input and perhaps wait, put it off until the next meeting?
This item isn't reflective of what we have to submit to the CTC, which is due in October 16th, but it has no bearing, as long as Items 1 through 3 were approved. I do have to note, though, as one of the projects on the list, and Item 4 was just approved on the consent calendar for item number... Trying to find, it's actually for the Rabo Bank Arena radios.
So how do you feel about this, Nick? I mean, is it something that, is it a problem, an issue?
Not in regards to the submittal of the resolution that's necessary, I mean, the list of projects that is necessary to be at the CTC by October 11th. It's not an issue.
City Attorney, can you help guide us to where we go?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, City Clerk, didn't we already take a motion, and didn't the council members already pass Items, again, I, 1, 2, and 3?
Correct.
Okay, so that's done. So then Councilmember Sullivan's comment is really with regard to Item 4, is that correct?
Correct.
And the Public Works Director is saying that Item 4, the Rabo Bank Arena, has already been voted on, so not with your last motion, with your motion that Vice, the Vice Mayor made. So again, you could continue Item 4, with the exception of the Rabo Bank Arena, if I had a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion and be able to evaluate for more than it has been tonight, Willie.
Okay, we have some people who'd like to speak. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, in regards to the last two items of Item 4, the sound wall landscaping improvement and the Hosking Interchange Bridge improvements, these are two items that I've been working with city staff for a long time. At this new interchange, I know that staff continues to work really hard to try and attract multimillion-dollar investment to the, to that interchange area. For the sound wall landscape improvements, this is an area of, it's a 15-foot tall wall that traverses the freeway between Hosking and approximately Panama Lane. It is an area that is constantly graffitied, Caltrans, even though we've had communication with them, when they go back and paint that wall, it is a mixed match of colors that does not lend to the attractiveness of our city. And again, with trying to attract such a large investment in tax dollars to our city, I think that providing this landscape improvement, which would really grow ivy up that wall to prevent future graffiti efforts, is a noble cause. And along with the Hosking Bridge improvements, I think that is a treatment and improvement, again, to help hopefully attract investment to our city, along with improving that interchange And as we continue in the conversation, maybe I'll circle back to the tree replacement stuff, but those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Two points to make. One is, in response to Councilmember Parlier, I have, I really take no issue with those two items. Really, my issue is in the $560,000 appropriation for a citywide tree replacement. I'm also, find the timing of all of it very odd, that before we've transferred funds for a specific project, and that was up for discussion this evening, and truthfully, this is my fault, we also then approved an agreement to spend the money that we hadn't actually yet appropriated, or given staff direction on. It was very clear at the last meeting, I had concerns with it, that bothers me, that should not have been an agreement on the agenda this evening. So I'm not going to support this particular transfer, you know, a motion, I'm not going to make a motion. So I will listen to my colleagues and follow their lead.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I would just comment that I am in favor of the citywide tree replacement. After five years of drought, we lost, give me the number, thousands of trees.
Around 5,000?
5,000 trees, and many of those trees should not have been planted in the first place, they were not the right type of trees, so to go back in now and plant trees that are the right type for our area makes all the sense in the world to me, that we provide the community with the landscaping that it had before, that we lost during the drought. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in favor of replacing the trees. As I remember, Ms. Hoover made a presentation to us, I think there was 2,300 trees, it was an enormous number. I don't know if this will replace all of them, but we lost a lot of trees in the storm, a number died from disease, and, you know, we talk a lot about branding our city, and our city starts to look like run-down, dilapidated city. It's like leaving graffiti on walls, just leaving damage there. I think, I think we all have a big investment in our city-looking first-class, and I think that attracts new companies and investment, and I hate to just endorse letting it look deteriorated. So I'd like to see the tree replacement done.
Councilmember Weir?
I make a motion to approve Item I-4.
You have a motion, please cast your vote.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Rivera voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, we have the first reading of an ordinance adding Sections 17.04.129 and 17.04.154, and amending Section 17.08.050 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code relating to commercial cannabis activity.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, if I could have the presentation and the lights, please? Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you a first reading for your consideration dealing with commercial cannabis activity. Before I present the ordinance, what I'd like to do tonight is give you an overview or a history of the law, both from the federal level, the state, as well as the local level, a brief update on the civil enforcement efforts through the city attorney's office, and then introduce the amendment to the municipal code to you. I can tell you right now that the amendment to the municipal code does three things. One, it proposes to define the word cannabis, define commercial cannabis activity, and then add a section to your municipal code which prohibits commercial cannabis activity. Marijuana on the federal level, as I'm sure we've all heard, is a Schedule I controlled substance. That means it is illegal to possess, cultivate, use, or sell. So this conflict between the federal government and the local jurisdictions has been in existence for many years, since there are, there are states and local jurisdictions which allow to the contrary. That was addressed in a Supreme Court decision back in 2005, which is up on the screen in front of you, and the Supreme Court basically held that because the use of medical marijuana is not a fundamental right, that the federal government could go ahead and enforce its own laws, even though, as I say, there are state and local laws to the contrary. In the state of California, California voters passed the Compassionate Use Act in 1996, that was known as Prop 215, and what that did is it exempted certain patients and caregivers from liability, and gave them some criminal immunity for possession and cultivation. That act was updated in 2003 by the legislature, and it was known as the MMPA, or the Medical Marijuana Program Act, and basically it extended the criminal protection to transportation and storage, again, to certain qualified patients, as well as their caregivers. On September the 8th of 2004, the city council at the time adopted the Resolution 252-04. That resolution indicated clearly to the public and as well as to staff that medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Bakersfield were not permitted uses within any zones within the city of Bakersfield. And I think it's important to acknowledge, because sometimes we forget, but the council did not need to do this back in 2004. And the reason they did not need to do it is because you have what's called a permissive code. And when you have a permissive code, if a use is not expressly allowed within your code, it's prohibited. So it was understood back in 2004 that medical marijuana dispensaries were prohibited, but the council, again, wanted to educate the public, and they wanted to take a very clear stand as to how they intended to move forward on this particular topic. Between 2004 and 2013, not only did we have the conflict between the federal law and the state law, but there was also conflict then between not only the state of California and many cities within the state of California, because, as I just showed you, we had the Compassionate Use Act, but there were some cities that did not feel comfortable with that, and they went ahead and they banned medical marijuana dispensaries. So in the state of California, we had a variety of cases that came out, and they came out, and they were in conflict with one another. We had one case out of the city of Lake Forest that said local governments may not ban medical marijuana dispensaries, and yet we had another case out of LA, not too, not too soon after Lake Forest, that said even if cities went ahead and they banned those dispensaries, it did not violate the equal protection clause, and the city was on firm grounds for going ahead and banning those particular businesses. The seminal case, really, though, came out of the city of Riverside, and as you can see, it was in 2013. That case went all the way up to the California Supreme Court, and the California Supreme Court issued its ruling, and it clearly holds that despite what the voters did in the state of California, that cities may use their zoning ordinances, and they may ban medical marijuana dispensaries. So the city council in 2013 basically changed the resolution to an ordinance, it was Ordinance 4731, and it clearly banned medical marijuana dispensaries. We were promptly sued under SEQA, and Richard Iger from the city attorney's office successfully defended the council ordinance at the trial court level. When the petitioners appealed, Mr. Iger was successful in the Fifth District Court of Appeal. And so you now have an ordinance that's on the books, and this is what it states, again, it defines medical marijuana dispensaries, and it adds medical marijuana dispensaries as a prohibited use. We then come to 2015, and in 2015, the governor signs into law what is referred to as MERSA, or the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. And that act basically established some state guidelines and regulations, it set up the template for how one becomes a medical marijuana... It set up the template for how one becomes a medical marijuana dispensary. The nice part about MERSA is that the legislation, I think, is a result of the city of Riverside case. It allowed for local control. It respected that. And in January of 2016, as a result of MERSA, at that particular time, there was a deadline for when we had to pass certain things relative to cultivation. The city council adopted Resolution 1016, which banned the cultivation of marijuana. We saw that, again, as an extension of medical marijuana. In October of 2016, the Jarvis Epps petition was presented to the city clerk as well as to the city council. And on October the 18th of 2016, the city council certified that petition. And what does that mean? Well, the Jarvis Epps petition had a requisite number of signatures from the voters within the city of Bakersfield that would allow for the medical marijuana dispensaries to exist in the city of Bakersfield as long as they had a permit, and they could likewise cultivate, distribute, and manufacture. When the council certified it, you did what the law suggests that you do and demands that you do, and you have it now on the ballot, and it will be presented to the voters within the city of Bakersfield in November of 2018. If the Jarvis Epps initiative passes in November of 2018, it will repeal the ordinance that I just had up on the slide before you, the ordinance that has withstood a challenge under SEQA on both the trial court level as well as the Fifth Court of Appeal. 2016 was a busy year. In addition to the Jarvis Epps petition, we also had, as you know, Proposition 64. Prop 64 legalizes recreational or non-medical use of marijuana by persons 21 years or older. It was approved by 57% of the voters statewide. But I think oftentimes what goes unnoticed is that the local results on Prop 64 were not the same as the statewide votes. In fact, there was close to 54% within the county that voted no on Prop 64. Only 46% voted yes. And if you want to break down awards, again, this shows that Prop 64 passed in wards one and two, but it went down in defeat in wards three, four, five, six, and seven. And going a little bit deeper, these numbers were obtained through county elections. This shows the number of voters in each of the wards and how they voted on Prop 64, both in terms of raw numbers as well as percentages. Again, as I indicated, Prop 64 makes it legal for persons over the ages of 21 to smoke or ingest non-medical marijuana. You can possess, process, transport it, again, without compensation, one ounce of marijuana or eight grams of concentrated marijuana. The other highlight, of course, is that it allows an individual to possess or plant up to six living plants for personal use per private residence, and it no longer has the distinction between mature and immature plants. Prop 64 also, however, prohibits the smoking of marijuana in any place where tobacco is prohibited. It's a very common question that we receive from callers to the city attorney's office. It also prohibits the smoking of marijuana within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or a youth center when children are present and while driving or riding in any vehicle used for transportation. The other aspect of Proposition 64 is that it requires that a non-medical marijuana business obtain a state license. You may have heard of the January 2018 date. That is the date that it is expected that draft regulations will be ready. The state licenses will not be issued any earlier than January of 2018. Obviously, they can be issued post-January of 2018. But the key here is that, again, because Prop 64 has that element of local control, if one wants to sell marijuana in the city of Bakersfield and they go to get a state license, by the way, they're going to be going to the Bureau, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which is a newly created department in Sacramento. The Bureau of Cannabis Control is only supposed to issue a license to that entity if the city of Bakersfield allows the sale of marijuana, whether it's medical or non-medical. If the city does not allow that, then the Bureau of Cannabis Control should not be issuing a license to that particular entity. Prop 64 also imposes an excise tax and interestingly prohibits a state or local tax on medical So again, the key, I think, to take away from Prop 64 is that the cities do retain control and that we cannot ban the possession or use, as I have currently indicated. A little bit about the civil enforcements, and Mr. Iger is here if you have some additional questions on this, but in April of 2017, your council adopted an ordinance allowing civil fines of $1,000 per day. We did this in order to provide the city attorney's office with an additional tool so that when we file our lawsuits against marijuana dispensary owners as well as the property owners, we can include this as a remedy. And that has found to be, I think, it's, again, relatively new since April of this year, but we have found that property owners are working more closely with the city attorney's office, and they are more anxious now to get their tenants that are operating marijuana dispensaries out of their particular properties with this civil fine in effect. In June of 2017, SB 94 was adopted. That kind of goes, we haven't heard too much about that, but SB 94 is actually referred to as MACURSA. And MACURSA, it's somewhat of a mouthful, but it's the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. Well, one of the things about MACURSA is that it's pretty clear now that the word cannabis is the favored term when discussing marijuana or cannabis regulations. And what 94 did is it basically repealed MERSA, and it merged it with Prop 64. So we are going to have a state licensing regulation or scheme now that will work both for medical as well as non-medical marijuana. What have we done here in addition to our civil enforcements? We did send a letter to the state. I hope that each of you, you should have all received a courtesy copy of that letter. And we informed the state that the city has a ban on marijuana dispensaries. We are continuing to engage in the civil enforcement efforts. Since Mr. Iger was successful in August of 2015, we have filed over 40 lawsuits in Superior Court. But we acknowledge that the complete coverage may require clarifying that the ban is on all commercial cannabis activities. Again, keeping in mind that you have this permissive code right now, it's, you're not supposed to have a commercial cannabis activity, medical or non-medical. But we do not want the state of California, if an entity comes to the Bureau of Cannabis Control, to go and say, "We would like to sell marijuana in the city of Bakersfield." They have only outlawed medical. They have not outlawed non-medical. Again, we don't want to slip through the cracks, which is why we would like the council to consider the ordinance that is attached to your administrative report tonight. What this proposed ordinance does is it adds a definition of cannabis. It adds a definition of commercial cannabis activity, as you can see on the screen. I will tell you that both the definition of cannabis as well as the definition of commercial cannabis is taken, it's a mirror image out of SB 94 as well as Prop 64. And then we are proposing to amend 17.08.050 of the municipal code to make it, again, crystal clear that both medical marijuana dispensaries and commercial cannabis activity are prohibited uses within the city of Bakersfield. I should also add that under the definition of cannabis, we propose to make the term cannabis and marijuana interchangeable. So I'd like to just close tonight by letting you know that, you know, the city is in a very unique position. We're not like other jurisdictions in the state of California, some of which have allowed medical and non-medical marijuana. Then they have put moratoriums in effect, and then they have disallowed it, and then they've put other moratoriums in effect, and then they've allowed it. Both of these activities have always, always been prohibited uses in the city of Bakersfield. Period. End of discussion. You may always choose to regulate in the future. That's always your opportunity. That's always your ability to do that as a city council. But once you do that, it becomes very difficult, if not impossible, to turn back the hands of time, clear the table, so to speak, and do that without exposing yourself to some degree of litigation. So that is why the city attorney's office is recommending first reading of the proposed ordinance tonight. I am available for questions, as is Mr. Iger, and I believe there's a representative from the police department here if you have any further questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
We had a little standoff up here. So, you know, I've had, we've, we've had these discussions now for quite some time, and, you know, staff knows this from, it must, it must have begun last year, but I had really expressed frustration then at what I saw was the rampant and uncontrolled growth of dispensaries in our city, many of which are located in Ward One and Ward Two, and actually really have a little visible impact on most other parts of the city. And was always frustrated then and continue to be frustrated at the lack of, lack of control we really have over a situation that seems to be, in my mind, running wild. I don't believe, I don't believe what we're doing is working. And I think anybody who drove through Ward One and drove by any number of dispensaries that are operating or drove through Ward Two and did the same thing would be, I think you'd be really hard-pressed to make a good argument that what we're doing is actually working. It's not. I think if I understand the numbers correctly, since the beginning of this year, our enforcement efforts have effectively shut down eight dispensaries. Is that correct? And since then, 10 have opened. That is a net positive gain of two dispensaries. I cannot in good conscience sit up here and tell you that the action we're taking tonight is going to do anything to mitigate a problem that I think is serious. In addition to that, outside of the criminal elements and bad elements that I think many dispensaries are bringing to neighborhoods, I think, I think what we're doing this evening is really a missed opportunity. I think other parts of the state are seizing on a real opportunity to take advantage of revenue that has otherwise not been there. And I think, you know, we, the city of Bakersfield's not flush with cash, guys. It's not. We have vacant positions. We have a need for more police officers. We have a need for more firefighters. We have a need to pay our employees fair wages. And you can't do that unless you make more money. We've talked about, at least I've talked about diversifying our economy, and, you know, certainly, we benefit greatly from sales tax revenue and retail and our oil and gas industry, and even to an extent, our agricultural industry. But the, if you, you know, if you looked at our budget and the woes we've had over the years, you know, you'd see it's been really up and down. And that's very, very difficult to sustain. And I think it's a disservice to a growing city like Bakersfield when we have services and commitments we must meet to the residents of Bakersfield. And I think in years to come, that will become increasingly difficult unless we do something different. I am by no means suggesting we start licensing every dispensary that wants to operate in the city of Bakersfield. I'm simply suggesting, I'm not suggesting, I'm telling you what we're doing is not working. And I don't know why we would continue doing the same thing. So, you know, whether it's thinking outside of the box or somehow being more creative than I think we've done, I think we need to be, because this problem, and I get many, many calls. In fact, someone, I had a presentation last week to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and one of the questions I got asked was, "What is the most common call you're getting right now from your constituents?" And the number one issue was related to dispensaries. And the number two issue is probably also related to dispensaries. We have a problem. I don't think what we're doing this evening is going to make that problem any, any better. So I can't support what we're doing. And I, so I'll be voting no, and I wanted to explain my vote. I think, you know, my colleagues know where I stand on this, and I'm sure that most of them disagree with me, but I really see an opportunity here that I think we're missing, and I just can't be a part of that.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in favor of this change in the ordinance. I think it solidifies our position, and it's obviously what the voters of Bakersfield want. And it, as the city attorney stated, you know, anytime in the future, if things change, then we can always change, but I think at this point in time, this is our best action. So I will make the motion on staff recommendation.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I have a representative of the police department step up, please? Thank you, Chief. I just want to ask you a few questions regarding this. Marijuana is still classified as Schedule I drug under the federal government. Is that true?
Mayor, go. Councilmember Parlier. Yes, sir. It's Schedule I drug, too.
And because it's still classified that way, it doesn't allow even legalized marijuana dispensaries or industry to operate in the normal banking structure. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So we're talking about a cash business, essentially?
Yes, sir.
So with having a cash business in town, the dispensaries that we've dealt with to date, can you just explain a little bit of the associated crimes primarily because it's cash business?
Yes, sir. Actually, over the last three years, the crimes have ranged everywhere from quality-of-life crimes, whether it's the loitering and the graffiti in the litter, to armed robberies and shootings.
Okay. So how many homicides, can you tell me, have we had in the city or maybe adjoining the city? Because there's been more than the one, I believe, right?
Correct. I believe we've had one, and I believe the sheriff's department's had two or three.
Okay. If you can stand by just a second, Chief, I might circle back to you. One of the comments that was made during public statements had to do with prohibition. I formerly worked for the state alcoholic beverage control, and let me tell you, just because prohibition went away doesn't mean that the alcohol beverage control industry runs amok. It's a highly regulated industry, and they have numerous laws, rules, and associated practices with that department. When I went to the California League of Cities event in Monterey right after '64 passed, there was two employees with the Bureau of Cannabis Control. And when they talked about the structure of the department, they didn't know what they were going to do, really. They were still trying to figure out where to get their computers, where to get other employees, and where to get an office. I don't know why the state formed a separate department like that. If it fell within state alcoholic beverage control that is used to managing things like this, maybe my position would be different. But they don't. So I want to go over a couple of things here, some notes that I wrote. I represent a large area that is underserved in the community. And the marijuana dispensaries, whether legal or illegal, aren't going to be in Seven Oaks. They're not going to be in Hagen Oaks. They're going to be in my ward, and they're going to be impacting my constituents. And my job is to listen to my constituents, and a majority of my constituents said they're not in favor of this. In, as far as... As far as gained revenues to the city, there was a recent Wall Street Journal article that talked about areas, different states, that have legalized cannabis, and the precipitous drop in the per-gram price in those areas that have gone from approximately $20 a gram to $5 and falling, which seems like a declining stock if you're investing in something. That means that the corresponding tax revenue that would come with something like this, I think, is very suspect. And some jurisdictions that are jumping on board and signing with this, thinking it's going to bring them, you know, the pot at the end of rainbow, I don't believe is necessarily Chief, one follow-up question. That when we talked about the cash business, even if it's legalized, that we lift our moratorium here locally, that is still going to be a cash business, correct? It's not going to be, they're not all of a sudden going to be allowed to use banking procedures locally, correct?
That's correct. The federal government has not changed their position.
So the same issue, whether legal in Bakersfield or not legal in Bakersfield, will still persist?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. I'm in favor of the vice mayor's motion. Thank you.
Council member Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. I share council member Rivera's frustration with the high concentration of marijuana dispensaries in Ward One and Ward Two. In fact, Ward Two has the highest number of medical marijuana or marijuana dispensaries out of any other ward, and it's very, very frustrating. And it's heartbreaking to hear the families who have to experience the crimes and the other incidents that are correlated with these marijuana dispensaries in their neighborhoods. I don't see how regulating and allowing dispensaries really chases out those bad actors unless there's strong enforcement. I think what with the city council accomplished in April through the civil fines should work and ought to, we ought to give it time to play out. It's been a recent action that we've taken, and I'd like to see how it plays out in the future. I've been in at least a half a dozen meetings now with the city attorney's office over the past six months regarding various different dispensaries throughout Ward Two, and the word is getting out there to the various different operators and the landlords, the property owners, regarding the civil fines. And so I am cautiously optimistic about the results of that action. And so I think that we are better off to, a bit better off in supporting this action at this time, and then learning from the experience, both locally and the experiences of other cities who take a different course of action and revisiting this in the future.
You have a motion? Please catch your vote.
Motion is approved with council member Rivera voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Well, it appears that nobody has any tonight. So again, thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for all of your efforts. Somebody is about, oh, no. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for participating, and have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned at 6:56 PM.